I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence today for Howard Safer Senior, who passed away on September 6th at a young age of 105? He was the Boston Post's recipient and for being the oldest living Charlton resident, our condolences to the family. 105. All right, let's move on to approve the last minutes from August 8th meeting.
So moved to this minute.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Community relations announcements and open forum.
All right, good evening. Announcements for the September 12, 2023 border selective meeting. September is library card signup month. If you don't already have a library card, this is the month to get one. All those who get a card in September will be entered to win one of several gift cards donated by local businesses. Hazard household hazards waste and electronic collection is Saturday, September 30th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Casella Waste Services Facility, 165 Barefoot Road, Southbridge, Mass. The flyer is on the town website. Free vouchers are available at the Board of Health. Chapter land classification applications due October 1st. So all the announcements are today.
Anybody has anything else?
One thing, if I may, Madam Chair. I asked town administrator, goal is to reach out to police and fire. Those first responders who were on site at the incident on Route 20 near Treehouse recently. Understandably, obviously, many can't make it, last minute request, tours of duty, et cetera, but this is not just an opportunity that I want to take to thank them for what they do. Because really, that's owed to every first responder in this town. And we don't thank them enough. We can't. Because if we tried to thank them every time, these people were heroes, we'd be doing it every day. But as things become more, I think, I don't know what the right word to say it, but publicly, public knowledge, social media, things are out there so fast, and to everyone who's out there and they read about these tragedies, things are the lack of, but they're putting it clean and neat words on a screen. They don't really see what these people see every day, and it's not clean and neat for them. So I do want to take the opportunity to thank those responders who were there on site for that tragedy and all our responders who witnessed this kind of thing all the time. And let them know that we could never express enough our thanks and our gratitude for what they do. And I think it's important when they ask for our support that we give it to them. I think people do not realize even remotely what they deal with. And I couldn't do it without probably killing myself or resigning, what they deal with every day. And I just think that all of our first responders, police and fire deserve our thanks, our gratitude, and our support. And I just wanted to make sure that they knew that, and that everyone in this town knows what they deal with daily.
Thank you.
Wilson.
Very.
Well, thank.
Wilson, very important.
On that same topic, I don't think we hit the agenda on it, but we were going to talk up. There was discussion about, we're going to talk about what the next steps would be to get Masti, T, Treehouse, and some other people into the same room.
Uh huh.
We had a discussion about, because it's happened a little too frequently there.
Yes, Madam Chair, I think Andrew corrected, but I believe under Andrew's TA report, there's going to be.
Oh, you haven't.
Yeah.
That part.
Yes.
Oh, that's part.
All right.
Thank you.
Moving to appointments.
I'll do it.
Yeah.
I'm going to get hold of people.
Anybody here for an open forum, please?
You're all day now, dressed. Don't have a party on. Do you have a seat you'd like? Drew, Drew works for you better, middle, does?
Yes, sir.
As long as Drew's happy, we're happy.
Well, good evening. My name is Anthony Abbi. I'm at 89 Hagerty Road. My fellow neighbors. I've been in town about six years, and I've opened a dialogue with a couple of the select board members about some opportunities and tools that it seems that the town should be evaluating for betterment of helping budgets and opportunities that may offset capital requests at school budgets. And I brought materials with me because these are, some of these are newer, and some of these have been around for 23 years. And half the state takes advantage of this with a 20% annual match from the state that we haven't adopted. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is Community Preservation Act. I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with that, but it's been on the books since the year of 2000. And it's an opportunity, again, it's a tool, and there's no perfect anything for a solution, but it's something to be evaluated, where it would be designated funds that could be used for open space, recreation, historical, and affordable housing. These projects are sometimes used in other communities for things like baseball fields, recreation fields for schools and such. So if a school, for example, is asking for 40, 50, $100,000 of capital request for renovation of said field or bleachers or development, we would be able to tap this kind of account, but we don't have it established here in Charlton. And I think that's a missed opportunity that should be at least looked at. Now, I can understand the standpoint if a select board member, not pointing fingers or anything, but in other communities, sometimes say, hey, you know, I don't know how the community feels about this, you know, I don't have enough information. Well, I've seen the information from other communities where they pursued this, and they said, you know, let's put a non-binding ballot initiative to get a temperature for town. Because this would have to be passed by ballot initiative anyway. So that would be a way for you as a select board to take a look at, is this a tool that would get some reinforcement and support by the community? And again, I mean, this is kind of like a 401K that you leave it on the table with no matching funds. If you don't, 20% and sometimes 30%, year after year after year compounded by the state in allocation, is a big deal. And when you're looking at, hey, we could take this request and that request off the capital request, that can make a big difference in our overall assessments for the town side and the schools. And, you know, coming from a citizen, they're really the same. I know that 60, 50 to 60% of our budget is the school budget, and it's not going to get smaller. Neither are any of the other cap requests, including a fire station, substation, and other needs of this town. So we need to kind of look at some of those options. So that's the first thing, and I have materials that I'll leave with in court. That's the first thing. And I also printed out, just for your own information, a comparable community in Western Mass and going back about 10 years worth of capital requests that were approved through CPA program. And you'll see all kinds of comparable projects that would be applicable to this unit. The second thing I wanted to bring to light to the board is two bills currently in the Mass State and House. We've got House Number 74 and Senate Number 34. Those would bring substantial amount of funds to this community and all communities across the Commonwealth. This is mostly just a modification of existing law that's under the Cable Act. This has to do with telecommunications companies using our public right of ways to get a free ride to distribute their services to subscribers with no compensation for the town. The cable systems are still provided because they're required under the Cable Act of 1995. Okay? This is basically a modernization of that to include and make equitable that industry and bring in revenue to the town and the cities. That needs to be addressed. There are quite a few communities and House and Senate representation that are in favor of this bill, but I think it would take a very strong letter from our select board saying, we also support this for the betterment of our community. And my final point to bring to life to this community is municipal fiber. Just a week ago, I went to a regional border select meeting in Western Mass comprised of seven ascending towns. All seven communities were enacting their own municipal fiber for the betterment of the businesses and the residents. Now, there's a lot of ways to look at the benefit of this. First of all, there are a lot of different models. Some of the models where the municipal owns the wire, but they're not the ISP of record. So every single subscriber can go out and shop any ISP they want, just like your electrical, you can shop any rate you want. Second, the district has to, is required by DESI, to subscribe to a certain amount of bandwidth per pupil. That's a fixed amount of bandwidth requirement. But they don't have a fixed cost because every year, the ISP, the only one that services them with that much bandwidth, can basically save whatever price they want, and that's a floating cost that eventually becomes our assessment. So it hits our books in turn. Whereas if it was a municipal delivery, one can control that price, and we can also recoup that price because if we're selling that service to the municipal, to the school district, guess what? It's an enterprise. That will come back to our community, just like if it was water or sewer or anything else. So I think that's another missed opportunity, and we're way behind all the other communities. And we really need to take a serious look at that because guess what? If you talk to younger generations, you have telehealth, you have telelearning, you have remote work, and that's a desirable asset to young families coming to establish their homes and their families. What do you mean by going to? Well, they're not saying, hey, which one's got the best senior center? I mean, that will come, but that's not what they're telling the real, the real term. They're saying, who's got the best schools? Where is a saved community? Do I have a good ISP, lots of bandwidth, because these are the needs I'm going to have? And it brings up property values, which makes us a stronger community. So I have materials to leave here for the board. I appreciate your time. I can always get into more detail if anyone has more questions, but I really wanted to bring this to light because it seems like some, a number of missed opportunities.
Thanks, Tony. If you could forward over some additional information, especially on the, on the like fiber optic work?
Absolutely.
Or optic work, I'd agree.
I understand that that CPA, we're already looking into it with their creations already?
No, this isn't.
That sounds, that sounds.
Yeah, that's a state program, basically.
Matching?
To a point, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, so it's a, it's a moderate or even minor increase in taxes, but for what you actually get back.
And it's not on the whole tax rate.
Yeah. The state actually provides you a kickback.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, so as far as the Community Preservation Act, I know that that actually has come up before this board many, 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 many times.
And again, I don't want to get in the top.
Yes, many times.
It's always good to talk about it.
I'm not prepared to discuss because I have any of the research in front of me, but I would ask Andrew if you could check on that. I know we've had these discussions many times over the years. As far as the two bills, I can't speak for anybody else. I don't ever write letters on bills I'm not familiar with. So I would like to do, if everyone agrees, we'd ask Senator Fattin, Rep Frost. We still have Durant. So if they could come in, and then maybe they could talk to us about these bills, get their positions in. And I'm sure they can basically oversimplify for us, everyone in town, what the bills comprise. Maybe we can get them here for our next meeting, we can have that conversation. As far as the fiber optic, not my area, but I would also want to know the cost to the town to own all that, but. So Andrew has some more.
What is the, on the Conservation Act, the first item you brought up, what's the, what's the pushback?
Why is taxation? With the typical taxes, people don't, people don't want to raise taxes. I mean, honestly, that is it in a nutshell.
There's usually pros and cons to all of these.
Absolutely. One of the things to keep in mind though is, you know, at some point, you know, I'm not proponent of raising taxes by agents. However, it will happen at some point where we're going to have a fire station replaced. We're going to have different, we're going to have different capital requests for replacing roofs and other such things for the schools. There are going to be big ticket bills coming, and they're probably all going to come about the same time. So we're going to probably inevitably looking at an override of some kind at some point. Now, do we do it in a 1% increase with matching funds and not the whole tax rate? Because it's, it's not the whole levy, it's above a certain threshold. So I think it's $150,000, and anything above that is what the 1% comes in. It's not, that's not the whole, it's not your whole property card. But 1% and a 20% or a 30% matched by the state, year after year after year versus we went two years, but now we've got to do a 3% override, or we've got to do a 4% override, those are going to be much more compounded. And I just am trying to bring this to the board's attention, that there are other members of this community having these conversations that it was time to bring it about.
Well, I want to thank you, Anthony, because I applaud your enthusiasm. Are you on any boards right now with the town? Any boards, committees? Do you have any interest?
I have two little kids.
He's trying to recruit you.
She's implying they're opening.
I actually put in my application a few times, but those committees were full, so I may circle back at some point.
Yes, we might.
Thank you.
I'm going to leave them too.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, girl. Go to the last door, Paul.
Anybody else? Open forum?
First appointment is for the Conservation Commission alternate, attached to the Town Bank Form from Peter Caffewall, seeking to appoint him to the Conservation Commission. At this time, there are two alternate openings. I recommend the board make the appointment of Mr. Caffewall as the alternate with a drunk expiration date of June 2026.
So move to Pete in the audience. We appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pete. Thank you so much for coming in. I really like when people are coming in in front of us and especially in front of the people, so we know who is serving and what comedy. That's hugely important to me. We want to put the face to all the good stuff. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Welcome to the show.
A second.
We have to take, we have to take a second and hold.
Yeah, so.
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next appointment is for the Lakes and Ponds Committee. Attach our three Town Bank forms seeking appointment to the Lakes and Ponds Committee. John Josie, Bill Millet, and Jennifer Smith. All terms expire June 30th, 2024. Recommend the board make the appointment.
So move to, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Soon. I was waiting for somebody to show up.
All right, the next appointments are for special police officers and traffic controllers. Attached to a request from Police Chief Dowd, asking the board to appoint the following. James Ellis and Shane DiDonato as special police officers. Michael Dumas, Nicholas Bastian, Stevie LeBlanc, Lamarras Rosario, Damian Bonier, Kerry Sewell, James Purvier, Paul Russell, John Harrington, Gordon Curtis, and Matt Oberzett as traffic controllers. All terms expire on June 30th, 2024, and I recommend the board make the appointment.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Questions, if I can, can we ask the chief? I have a couple of questions for the chief. Thanks, Dan.
I didn't see it back there.
He's hiding because he knew I might ask a question. Special police officers and traffic controllers, there's been a lot of changes recently, which is, I think, caused this need, if you will. Special police officers and traffic controllers. If you could just maybe give us a brief explanation of like what a traffic controller is for people who are watching. And I think one of my questions is, do all of these people have a law enforcement background? Is one of my questions, and the other one is that I know the need, and as a strong chief, it's your decision. My preference is always to have officers doing that work. Sometimes they can't. So I just wanted to know your position on, you know, would it be offered to our officers first? And then if we don't have officers who want to take that, then these people would take it.
So what happens is some jobs require a police officer.
Okay.
The contractor's looking for a police officer. The traffic constables or the traffic controls, whatever you want to call them, that's something we've created since post because you're no longer allowed to have auxiliary officers. So the two people that are specials both have full-time academies. Shane DiDonato left Dudley Police to go work in the private sector, but he's kept up all his training, and he's already gone through post. James Ellis is a retired trooper. He's also come up on his post, so those people I can put to work.
So that basically, you're liking auxiliary, what an auxiliary was?
Yes. So basically, they're not, I'm not using them to work shift so much as using them to work the details that require, and mostly it's through, you know, private contractors. As far as the civilian traffic constables, traffic controllers, those were, since post, there's no longer an ability to put somebody through a reserve at the Mitten Academy, so they're becoming more and more civilians. Several of those names will sound familiar to you before we.
Before we.
Well, yeah, yes, three of them are current dispatches, so I just, as they came aboard, I was just affording them the same opportunities I afforded previous employees, but I wanted them to be here a while before we did that. So I've got a retired Worcester captain, Jack Harrington, Chief Purvier. So there are some, Paul Russell, that have a police background, and some are civilians that will train inside the department before they go away. Thank you.
So the, and to the chair, so the traffic controller and the traffic constables are the same name? And they don't have arresting powers or?
No.
They do not.
That's something that happened with posts. So basically, you may see a traffic constable potentially with a firearm. That's only if they meet two requirements, they're retired law enforcement, and they went through LEOSA, which is what retired police officers can do to maintain a firearm. But they have no right to get involved or utilize it if I made it any more than you folks would.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's just that they could carry. Otherwise, they're not carrying firearms with all those two requirements. Anything else, David? While I'm on the hot seat?
I'm going to call you back out there. You can go hide behind the TV again.
Yeah, I think I made a motion, David. You made a second?
No.
You did a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Pete. The next appointment is for a special plumbing inspector. You received a request from Building Commissioner Curtis Meskis stating that due to the appearance of conflict for a specific property, Peter Starkus and Paul Mazek, our current inspectors cannot do the plumbing and gas inspections. Arrangements have been made to use Matt Posey from Lester to complete the inspections at the same rate as our current inspectors. I would recommend the board make the appointment as a special plumbing inspector for the purpose of performing inspections when needed.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now a couple of resignations. First for our Deputy Emergency Management Director. Attaches a letter from Terry Gobb, resigning her position as Deputy EMD for the town effective September 23rd, 2023. The board should accept her resignation, and a letter thanking her for her time in this position has been prepared, is in your signbook.
So move to the break.
Terry's great, and all the great things that she's done for that town, we really appreciate it, and this is over great.
She would be.
She would be my.
Yeah, she would be.
And our other resignation is for the Government Study Committee. Attaches a letter from James Mead, resigning his position on the Government Study Committee effective immediately due to being unable to attend meetings due to work and childcare commitments. The board should accept his resignation, and a letter thanking for his time in the position has been prepared.
So move also to the break. Chair is a good guy.
All in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, just very briefly, before we go on to discuss the appointments, just a quick aside. Not one of our direct reports, but Pete Borja, I think we all know very well, former selectman, current water sewer commissioner, et cetera. He's decided to move on to a larger role in a different town. So even though it's not one of ours, quite honestly, although I'm sure everyone loves to watch the Water Sewer Commission, I don't think everyone does quite as much as the Waters Blackman. So I just want the public to be happy for all this time that he's done to really, you know, get things, not only get things going, but keep things going. I know there's been an awful lot that he's dealt with. So he said, you know, Pete, especially as a former selectman, really knew his stuff. So again, he'll be missed, but I'm glad he's going on to, you know, he has something bigger to do. So outside of that.
Yeah, I think any gap in between a replacement, I want to make sure that we don't lose any momentum that we've gained with the town circumfer, we're basically trying to become water independent. So I want to make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks during the transition.
Yeah, I've been in contact with Chairman Catwell. We've discussed kind of our transitional plan, and we've already put it out for advertisement for replacement. So hopefully, a small gap.
Thanks, sir.
All right, several appointments.
All right, so first one, 6:45, Superintendent Nick Field is here. So give you guys a face of the name.
Come on up here.
Yeah, give him a good five-minute rowing.
Finally, the face of the name. Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
I've been with the town since 2006, made different roles, went to management role about five years ago. I'm very excited to take on the new superintendent role. We're looking to hire a light equipment operator here in the very near future to replace the boots on the ground, so to speak. Other than that, I'm looking forward to winter preparations to right around the corner, unfortunately. I know no one wants to hear that, but that's what's on my forefront at this moment.
You sure you're dropping the W word at your first meeting?
Really?
If you say so, I'm walking out. I swear to God.
No, Nick's been great so far. Been very proactive with a lot of things on his plate, you know, especially during the transitional period. And kind of got a lot thrown at him all within the first week. So, you know, I think Nick's doing a great job stepping up so far.
Yeah, Nick, you come very highly recommended. I think you do a great job. One thing I would ask the board especially, that once you get your, you know, like everything calmed down for you like a little bit, maybe like come in quarterly, just kind of give us an update about what's going on, you know, the obligatory, hey, here are the roads that we're looking at to do next year. I mean, just really quick, high-level strategy updates for the folks. But outside of that, like I said, if you need anything, you know, talk to us, talk to Andrew, and we're going to figure it out for you.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, no worries if you got to skip plowing Hagerty Road. To make sure, you know.
Is that your election?
And through the chair, and if you do, you do come highly recommended. Everyone, everyone that I talk to you about has nothing but good things to say.
Great to hear.
Yeah, and I always admire the fact when we can promote from within, when we have the ability to do so. I think that's great. You were an outstanding candidate. Congratulations.
Thank you for your involvement in the Altomay. Thank you for your help. I'm going to hold your passage to that. So hopefully that will continue because it's a huge help and greatly appreciated every year. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thanks, Nick.
Okay, thank you.
Wes.
Yeah, thanks for coming in.
All right.
All right, our 6:50 is for a poll hearing for Dressel Hill Road. Attach a filing request from National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., requesting permission to install one joint on pole on Dressel Hill Road. Also attached is the notice that was sent to a butters. This request has been forwarded and approved by both the Police Chief and TPW Superintendent. No comments or concerns have been received as of today. The chairman should open the public hearing by reading the notice as sent to a butters and recommend the board approve the request.
The Charlton Board of Senate will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 12th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m. in Meeting Room 1, Town Hall 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507, to act on a request from National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., seeking permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along the, across the following public way. Dressel Hill Road, National Grid to install one J O pole on Dressel Hill Road, beginning at a point approximately 1,250 feet south of that center line of the intersection on Flynn Road. National Grid to install one new 35 Class 3 pole number 37-2 on Dressel Hill Road to resolve the issue of the service for 47 Dressel Hill Road being hit and damaged multiple times. They are also seeking permission to lay and maintain underground ladders, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings at each of said petitioners' my desire for distributing purposes. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear on the date and time specified or submit concerns in writing.
Who do you want here to talk about?
I'm here for National Grid.
Nice. Oh.
Want me to sit there?
Yeah.
Please.
I'm actually the homeowner of that home that was hit twice. And what I want to say is I don't think that these large trucks going by, they're going by quite fast around that corner coming towards my house, and I don't think they're following the height requirements. Also, the wires are put through the trees going to my home, so I don't know if it can be just connected to a different pole, not going through the trees, because that also has something to do with leaning on the wires after storms. So basically, the whole electrical box and everything has been ripped out of my house twice and ripping off my siding, and my daughter's bedroom is actually right by there. Where the electrical live wires are actually thrown on my porch the last time. And we play out front. It can happen at any time of the day. It just happened to happen both times at like 6:30 in the morning.
How's this happening?
I don't think that'd be a question for National Grid.
I think, yeah. And aren't you guys doing underground now?
No, we're not changing it to underground. We're putting a pole pretty much directly in front of her house. So that way, we can make sure. So that way we can make sure that the wires going across the road are raised up enough that there's no chance of them getting hit again. And then her service will be from that pole that is on the same side as her house down to her down to her house. So we're trying to alleviate that that risk of.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, as long as you're happy.
I'm fine with that. I don't care. It's there. What I care about is the safety of my children and people out front. So.
Of course. And you think that that's sufficient?
I do believe so, yes.
Let's mark that. If you have issues with that, let us know right away. Then then we can have a follow-up conversation. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Cool. Thanks, guys. And thank you for coming in. I'm assuming nothing else. Motion to close the public hearing?
Everybody in favor?
Alright, motion to grant the request.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
We are being just after seven o'clock.
So close.
So. We have our meeting with the Finance Committee regarding the special town meeting requests and to discuss priorities and to close the warrant. So I see a couple of Finance Committee.
Love when our conference comes.
This is all for you.
As long as Ashley's not, oh.
Ashley is, yeah, come on.
Just in the review of the budget.
Just tell everyone.
Yeah.
We do not have a court.
At least it is. Don't forget, you have to leave. No, just kidding.
So we can have some discussion. And. And I would like to, yeah, I would like to introduce Chairman Poskin. Tonight is his first meeting on.
Hey, Jeremy.
Welcome.
Let's see you all. Thank you. Alright, your meeting, take us where you want to take us.
Alright, so the first, say, five articles are pro forma amendments to budget, interdepartment transfers, capital requests. So I think primarily the discussion point would be on capital, is pretty much on capital. So, Ashley, do you want to go through some of the capital items?
Yeah, I didn't print the warrant out, but I have them here.
Oh, but by the way, Ashley, sorry.
Sorry to put four.
Uh, for those who don't, I'm sorry, who who actually want to follow along, this is all on the agenda packet underneath our Board of Selecting page. So we'll be talking a lot of numbers, but everything's out there. Sorry, Ashley, I didn't want to cut you off.
So I have a sheet that Andrew had sent out to everybody. So we, Andrew and I basically went through the list of everyone's asks for the year. And we tried to narrow it down based on the free cash that was certified. And also tried to put a plan together to somehow fund Hillside or Substation. So just going down this list here, Cemetery had asked for a mower. And then he came to me maybe like a month and a half ago and asked if he could get a river tooth in preparation for the frost for burials. So we kind of compromised. So his number is the same number. I just gave him two items. So he asked for fifteen grand for a mower. The quotes have come in a lot less. So that's, he still the fifteen between the two items. So that's coming from Cemetery, one for replacement for the mower and the river tooth. Conservation, which actually we had just switched. We're gonna change to under Andrew's purview with our Conservation Director leaving. Our open space and recreation plan has to be updated this year or else we fall out of compliant compliance. So there's a grant where we can put the money up and then the grant will match to pay for the remaining. So there's a twenty thousand dollars for that. The, I talked with Nick, with Jerry retiring, and they kind of changed up their capital plan a little bit. So originally he had asked for an excavator, and by he, I mean Jerry. Nick sees that they need a skid steer a little bit more than the excavator. So he changed that from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-four. And he got a couple quotes, so it's right around that one-twenty mark. This is in addition to their current skid steer, not a replacement. And then they are down a sander for snow and ice. So he asked if he could get one of those too. So that was a new request. So those are their two items for highway. We'll skip the fire. We'll come back to that one. In talking with library and working with Andrew, the two hundred thousand we had allocated to them last year for the repair of the roof and gutters in the back of the building, isn't going to be enough with all the prices going up and everything. They need like another hundred and fifty thousand to complete that portion of the project. So rather than giving them money to start working on the front of the building, we figured let's let her handle one big project at a time. So we'll fund the rest of the hundred and fifty to get them completed through the back of the building and then that will be all set. The only thing that may change, and this is talking with her in the past week, their fire pond is the outback of the library. From my understanding, is all clogged with debris and outlook. It's the whole pond or just the pipe? And the screen needs to be replaced and that's for their fire suppression for the building. Originally, a company quoted them like seventy grand to have that done. Well, now the same company says it's kind of out of their scope of work and we're gonna need to go out to bid on the project anyway. She's thinking it could possibly double that. So that's kind of a placeholder at the moment. She should be getting us a quote by the end of the week. So by the time we finalize the warrant, we should have an actual number for that.
Yeah, that's almost a half, though. It's not like we can turn a blind eye to that.
Yeah, and she's been asking for it for almost a year. So it's kind of like I can't keep picking the can down low unless we could possibly lose the building. So.
I think with the library of like Alexandra, I just can't deal with.
Yeah, so that number may change. But I told her at least she has the placeholder for the seventy grand for now. So hopefully we get an update on that. We have a couple items on here from some, ones for some town hall improvements. So we've been working on all the other buildings in town, try not to let this building go. So just some around the building, some maintenance, some ceiling, some carpets, some just some work, maybe some ACs have lots of AC issues. Just kind of whatever comes up, we can just do some town hall renovations just to keep some improvements here.
Actually, Ashley on that, because I know Dan, the chief's there. Hey, chief, that that HVAC of fifty grand, is that gonna be enough for you? Because I know you've been like duct taped and looped recently and. We're having a pretty good free cash year, so.
If I can find my plumber, Timmy Reynolds, you know, he said he was getting back to me two Mondays ago with the latest and greatest and depending upon what he could do. But I don't think we need to go the million-dollar route. They proposed.
Can we just put a little asterisk on this one saying like after Tim gets back to Dan that we might want to revisit because.
Yeah, so in talking, Andrew and I were talking with the chief. We kind of, it's not gonna completely update their whole system, but they need, it's your heat that doesn't work correctly, right?
What they're gonna do is, um.
For all the areas.
Small mini split structure.
Right.
There's an alternative heat source should we lose heater AC.
Yeah, so at least it will help them for now rather than having them wait just in case something happens. So I kind of thought that was a good plan for the moment, but.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Just if if that does get bumped up a bit, you won't have any objection from me, let's put it that way.
Okay. So those are the two kind of municipal building things. PD and working with them at the end of the fiscal year were able to take a lot of their items off of their bucket list with the excess that they had from being very conservative with their budget. So a lot of his items, and he got a couple grants, a lot of his items he was able to take care of at the end of the fiscal year. So right now, the only thing that I have on for him for capital would be just the three cruisers that they request. And then there are some other things that we're gonna do within the operating budget, the excess that we have from Dudley Charlton. And then some excess that we have from the new growth that we'll take care of and then that's later down the list. There's a, um, the body worn cameras. That's the software that they have that was originally like somebody quoted us like two hundred and fifty thousand. And Danny ended up finding we can get get the same software for like thirty-two grand.
Danny didn't find. She wasn't spotting it.
Okay, so. But he was working with them to find it. So he got the number way down. So now we'll add that into their operating budget every year. Um, so that's that cloud-based software.
Just for a second, I know you wanted to bring up.
Oh, yeah, so I had a request to add. I don't know if we'd go on this or a separate article. I was gonna ask for as a separate article for fifteen thousand dollars in a free cash, but now I think it's best to do it as two separate articles. One for thirteen and one for two thousand dollars. I didn't think Dan would be here. So I told Andrew I was gonna ask for this and then talk to Dan later to see if any of the items I wanted to ask for were already in his tactical gear list. So best to ask for as thirteen and two. So I wanted to ask for thirteen thousand dollars from free cash. Very affordable to add some tactical gear, tactical helmets, plate plate holders. I wanted to have it on there. I was gonna talk to you, but you're here. If those are in your fifty, then we don't need that. If they're not in his fifty for tactical, I wanted to add that as thirteen thousand for that. And then a separate line of just two thousand dollars for targets, steel targets for the police training range, which they very much need down there for training purposes. So the total for both, my original intent was to ask for the fifteen and then just amend it from the floor if Dan already had that in his ask list, down to two. But maybe best just to list as thirteen and two. Unless Dan says it's already in his fifty, then we'll just ask for two thousand dollars for the targets.
So you've been able to get a lot of tactical.
The helmets, the plate holders.
Not all the way there, David, yet, where we've made some advancements. So we've done some shields, ballistic shields, some breaching equipment, things like that. But now cruisers, now that would be the next step, I think. I think we probably can get to it this year.
And so these are items that you already had in your in your budget. So we, he didn't have to ask us, which is wonderful. He didn't have to ask us for extra money for the shields and the breaching equipment. They, I'd like to get in this same thing, then the thirteen thousand to add the the plates, plate holders, and the helmets. Because we have it in free cash. It's really affordable, thirteen thousand to equip every cruiser with a plate holder and plates and every officer with a helmet. It's like twelve thousand eight hundred bucks. And then two thousand as a separate or bundled together for the targets for the officers' training at the range.
So you're basically asking for an extra fifteen grand.
So then you want to make that number sixty-five?
Fifteen thousand total.
Fifty would have included that.
Okay.
Not the steel targets. That's something. So then.
So it's addition.
Dan, so just need two then?
I'm going to make the tactical gear work at the end of the year.
Without that?
Yeah, because they usually, he's usually really good with his budget. So at the end of the year, I let him flex and.
So let me answer this question.
Keep my capital items.
If we if we include it and Dan doesn't need it, because he can make it work, could the money go back to general fund?
It'd get reappropriated at the end. It would have to get re, it would, we'd have to vote to close it out. Or you could close it out and then it'd go back to your free cash.
Okay, only because as much faith as I have in Dan and he does it, that's wonderful.
Right, you never know.
But I'd rather have that in there as an insurance policy.
So these are essentially PPE items for the police officers. So with their current loadout, what is your, what ballistic rating will your current vest stop? Mr. Small arm, not a large, right. So if we're going with these plate carriers, that's adding more protection for those officers if they're going into some of these high-risk situations that we've recently heard of. So that's, you know, that's, you know.
Save a, save their life. And then the training, the targets are because they need to be trained.
Yeah, I don't think it's a question of importance. It's just a question of how we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah, it's up to you if you want. Yeah, it'd be up to Danny.
I'd rather have the insurance.
Because both the helmets and the vests, I mean, they'll they'll stop at three oh eight, seven six two versus what small arms, so I mean, it's.
Yeah.
It's a common round that you'll find out here.
Right, so we can have, for that, for that little money, we can have a helmet for every officer and a plate holder in every cruiser.
At that point, I would just say do the whole fifteen and just, I would assume that the steel targets would be under tactical gear and just do a fifteen thousand for tactical gear and they can buy both of it with.
Dan, you would say no to more money, would you?
I wouldn't say what.
No.
No money. That being said, I don't know that I'll need it. Like I said, we got to.
Right, but then we can put it back into free cash.
Barring another round of COVID or something like that, that this anomaly.
Right.
I think we're gonna be able to accomplish some of it. So they, they gave me fifteen thousand tomorrow. Tomorrow I'd be ordering them next week. I mean, you're expediting it, but I don't know that there's a crucial need right now where we've hit some of the boxes that we need to check off.
Yeah, so the nice thing about. Right, the nice thing about this is that if you are able to wind up with that fifteen K at the end of the year, we can put it right back into free cash.
The other option is you could do it.
This way, we know you're gonna get it.
I'm just saying I may not need it.
Exactly, exactly. And that's the insurance policy. If you don't need it, it goes back to free cash.
So how about we go for the fifteen grand with the understanding of, Dan, if you don't need it, you 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 just kick it back to us?
The other option is you could go for it in May at your May town meeting. Because by then he'll know if he doesn't have it, you could always ask for it in May. He'd get it either way if you want to go that way.
Again, my, I can't speak for everyone. My personal feeling is I want as much protection and training for the officers.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
The sooner the better, not that something could happen, but we don't want something to happen between now and May.
Right.
I'd rather they have it and make sure they have it. And then if Dan is able to, we put the fifteen back in free cash later. Instead of, well, we hope to, I'd rather know that we have it.
Yeah, either way, just.
Dan writes, runs a really tight budget. He's almost always kicking money back anyway. So I have no problem saying.
He's pretty good at that.
You know what, let's, let's, if, you know, I'll tell you from somewhere else, but you know, let's like allocate the fifteen, it was a fifteen?
Fifteen total.
Fifteen grand and Dan, if you don't spend it, we'll just put it back in the free cash. And that and that's assuming that the town approves it.
If you don't spend it, we might get Selectmen Barosa to kick in fifty hundred bucks for a pizza party.
Speaking of, what should we talk about?
Or we can get the booking room.
Yeah, so I'll add that in. So that will fall under with his, with the cruisers. We'll add that one in. So I'll do the fifteen K for tactical gear and he can get both the shields and the.
Helmets, tactical helmets, and the steel targets for the retraining.
Yeah, so it'll fall under one article.
Thing.
This way you're not splitting it up. It doesn't, in case somebody wants.
Whatever's the best way to make sure that we can act on that now.
Yeah, I think that's easier than if he had left over. He could buy something else. It gives him kind of a wider range in the tactical gear that he's not just set to that one item. If something happens to be a little less, he could buy something else tactical gear related.
Right, and I see it as kind of an insurance policy.
Yeah. So that's, we got that in the police. So technology, that's our normal, you know, computer upgrades. There's a lot of computers that are going out in town, all the upgrading to Windows eleven, you know, to the cameras, all that, all that fun stuff that Jeff does. We're gonna skip, well, we'll do the landfill. So landfill monitoring was in the Board of Health's operating budget. The problem we have with that is he needs an insurance policy that we have money set aside to pay for this to work on capping the landfill, separate from the two million dollars. I forget what the word he called it was, but there's a terminology that they use that he has to have this money set aside. And what happens with operating budget every year is it closes. And when you encumber something from the current fiscal year, it's for a specific vendor. And he was running into lots of issues in his office. So I said, let's stop putting in operational and give you an article. It doesn't close until you spend it all. And then you can work on capping, mowing, work on all the PFAS testing we have to do. So all that money is coming out of there. He's working very close with.
So so there'll be three seventy less on their side.
Yeah, so I had taken for their FY twenty-four budget, if you were to look at their expense from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four, it's like three hundred and seventy thousand dollars less than it was in FY twenty-three.
So I went at whole, this is a big number, but legally it's an administrative.
Yeah, so we were already paying for it. It was in the budget. Yeah, so we were already paying for it, it was in the budget, but now it's gonna be a capital article, he won't have to worry about it, it's there until he sends it all.
I'll leave that makes sense.
Yeah, and that's, we don't really have a choice with that money, we have to cap that landfill, so. Um, the grant fund matching, so Andrew's office has worked very hard with trying to get us grants. We ran into a grant for the number two schoolhouse, where we could go and restore it and fix it up, but we needed a match. We didn't have funds for the match, so we're gonna create a grant match funding article. So if somebody tries to go get a grant and they need a match for it, we have the funding. The state reimburses us as a kickback, so we have that money there set aside so we can pay for it, because they won't authorize us to have the grant unless we have the funding mechanism there to pay for it.
So for the, the work for the number two schoolhouse, does that include like the, I think they need windows, right? They need windows?
Windows, roofs.
Roof structure.
We had a full structural analysis done that was paid for through a grant. They basically identified everything, and this was a high priority, but they said you needed X number available matching bonds the date that it was. And that was back in May, so.
Yeah, so we've done this before, I don't know how many, I want to say maybe twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
Good, because they get snow, literally snows into the building.
Yeah, yeah, so we've had this same type of account, the grant fund matching account, that was what I wanted to say in like twenty fifteen, and that's been depleted, so we didn't have enough to do this part of it. And that's, obviously if the state's gonna give us, it's free money, so.
Awesome.
So that's kind of a no-brainer on that point. And then our normal, we have our OPEB funding, we're gonna try to fund a little bit more this year towards our OPEB. We funded a hundred thousand within the operating budget, we're gonna use another hundred and fifty towards free cash to get us to that two fifty mark where we like to at least be at. Um, it's a little bit more than what we should be doing this year, but obviously closer to our goal, the better. Um, we're going to be putting five hundred thousand dollars into our stabilization, which brings us to twelve percent in stabilization. So that's exciting, so we're above that ten percent threshold.
Yeah, let's keep it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so that's pretty much all of the free cash capital, and then the OPEB capital, or regular stabilization. Um, if we want to, do you want to address the deputy chief first, or do you want to go to fire station first?
What about police, let's start doing.
Let's see, police stipends.
Okay, yeah, oh yeah, so then we're gonna go through and do all of the, reinstate all the stipends. So it's for like library, any of the elected positions, so library, board's luck with planning board, cemetery commission, recreation. Water sewer will get reinstated, but out of water sewer budget.
Are we doing that retroactive, or are we doing it in the go-forward?
So, yeah, well, so how is it gonna, it's for the whole fiscal year? Because like there are some committees that only get paid, and there are some committees that get paid monthly, and some committees that get paid quarterly. So are we just doing that set of money from now to the end of the fiscal year, or is it gonna be prorated?
We would do it from the beginning of the fiscal year.
Okay, that's what I think, that's what I told Watson.
So going back to June.
Yeah, so.
So starting, anyone who was in office on July first will get a full year.
Yeah, so my, so I actually had a question for the board, if you guys want to take a stance. Um, I had the question posed from water sewer, what are you doing for the boards that get paid monthly? Are you gonna take that amount and divide it by the nine remaining months, and then just get that for the nine remaining months? So it's the same, you're almost gonna get paid more a month, but it's the same dollar amount? Or are you just gonna go retroactive back to July first, catch you up to October, and then use that dollar amount going forward?
What's easier for you?
I don't care. Essentially, it's the same thing, I'm still inputting a number into payroll, so.
It, I don't care either way, to be honest with you, if it makes.
It would make probably more sense to just take the dollar amount, divide it by nine, and get it to the, than it's not.
Unless the board disagrees, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, water sewer asked what the board was gonna do, so I said, well.
Out of all the things I'm worried about, there's one more.
I know, and a lot of the committees are only like semi-annually, so yeah, not, not everyone gets paid differently, so. It wouldn't matter for them, but the boards that get paid monthly, those are the ones that will really matter for. So we'll just take the amount that you get for the year, and I'll just divide it by the nine remaining months and just go back to paying monthly.
Unless the board disagrees, I'm fine with it.
So it'll seem like a little bit more this year, but it will go back to the normal amount for FY twenty-five. So it's the same thing. Yeah, so we'll take care of that. Um, the other money we're gonna use for free cash is gonna go towards the fire station.
Police duty.
Oh, you'd like to touch on that, police duties request.
Yeah, for the deputy, so that is coming from, so we had some excess in our new growth this year. Um, so we have some, I mean, we kind of thought we budgeted at like our max. And then talking with the assessor, we had a little bit of excess there. Um, and I know high on our list, when we were looking at all the new positions, was the land use person, but we're taking care of that with conservation, she's gonna help out with ZBA and conservation. And then we took care of all the firefighters, so the deputy chief, I think, was kind of next on the list. So I don't know if Danny wants to touch base.
I really need the position, there's so much going on with post, and cadets, and the training, and body one cameras is a beast, and it's just unbelievable. Now Gary's the second in command, I mean, he was at the accident on Route twenty. It's not like these people aren't available to go to calls, but I need somebody doing the administrative stuff. Gary has to stop doing all of the administrative stuff he's working on, that's the only thing to get done. He's at an accident scene, this person would be able to sign payroll and things like that while I'm out on vacation, or injury, or anything like that, it's just, we're running the department like we did twenty years ago. We had a lieutenant twenty-five years ago. We haven't had any growth. The department's larger, the reporting, the grants and things like that, that we've been, Gary's been wonderful on as far as seeking grants. I think that will continue, I think the position will pay for itself.
Yeah, they have gotten a lot of new grants, and I mean, just looking at both of their payroll, two of them who work a hundred and thirty amount of hours, so.
Vascha, do you? Generally, I don't have an issue with this, but I know Hank and I often feel the same on this, in that my concern, for lack of a better word, is that using free cash to do something in the operating budget, knowing we're halfway through the year, especially on this, saying it's such a need, I can kind of deal with it, but. No, it would, oh, it's the movement, I'm sorry, it's not free cash, right?
No, it's still, it's.
It's the excess, so.
We're actually moving it from the excess funding from.
From Dudley, that's.
From the Dudley, sorry, yeah. I, you know, and I would say one-time funds would be a nice way to say it. And generally, like I said, I generally disagree with it, on this one, I can see it because of the need, but really the question isn't, for me at least, to say, are we gonna fund this with one-time funds? It's, so we all have to agree that we're gonna to budget this in May, and that may necessitate cuts somewhere else. So this is gonna go back to an overall prioritization discussion come, come May, that we may be looking for X amount of dollars to come from somewhere else. Because we are, we'll be saying tonight, and depending on how Fincom feels, that this is an absolute must-have, so we're going to put it in the May budget. With that, I'm generally curious of how like others feel, including Fincom.
Yeah, and then I think Dan and Gary do a great job, support a hundred percent. But my, my own personal position on this is I'd rather not see a deputy chief. I'd rather use the monies, if, if they were to be found, for ongoing, because this is still a point not a one-time expense. I'd rather see it go toward an admin role, which could alleviate a lot of that for them. And another sergeant and or patrolman, which would then give us administrative assistance in the office, as well as an additional sergeant and or patrolman on the streets. I'd rather go that route personally. I think that way our chiefs and lieutenant get administrative support to offload a lot of this, and we also get hopefully another sergeant and maybe patrolman out of it. That's just my, my own position. Give them administrative support and more bodies.
Dan, your thoughts on that?
Well, I disagree, I mean, I think that what we need is a structure there, a command structure, and there needs to be a clear path of what's happening. All it takes is, you know, one injury, and all of a sudden we're like, who's in charge, who's doing this, who's doing that? Look around, you tell me another department in the area that runs like this. It's just, it's an admin, or it's not the trend, it's, if anything, I'm not looking to be top-heavy, I'm not. Believe me, I get it, I need the lieutenant running all aspects of patrol. Now, Gary's position would be backfilled, they'd still be a lieutenant, they'd still be a new sergeant's position, because a sergeant would likely become a lieutenant, or lieutenant would likely become, those would be promotions, so that we didn't lose a body, we have a new position, so those back.
We wouldn't have extra bodies on the street though, in other words, so in other words, we're creating.
We wouldn't lose anybody off the streets, is what I'm saying, we wouldn't lose anybody.
Right, we don't lose anybody, we gain an administrative role. As opposed to my approach where, and as much as I respect Dan, we just don't agree on it. You know, one way we gain an administrative role, we don't lose anyone on the street. Whereas with my approach, I think he'd gain an administrative role by having another body helping with that, and gain bodies in the street.
Well, I guess I'm looking for the administrative portion to be more than just signing payroll, and working on payroll.
Right, do payroll, grants.
But there's grants, and I don't know that you're gonna find a civilian that hasn't done that before that's gonna jump in and be able to, you know, delve into these grants.
That's what we did in Andrew's office, we have Mary, right, who is, is.
Kara.
Mary's, Mary's the.
Sports librarian.
Sports librarian, Kara is, I guess, you and the rest of the office, but she also does grant writing and everything else, which is why she was brought in as admin to do a lot of that other work, including the grant writing, and also processing and pursuing the grants. So I was basically envisioning a similar role that works for Dan and Gary with payroll, with grant writing, with pursuing grants, and all that laborious work, freeing our police officers to do more police work, and then giving them extra bodies in sergeant, patrolman to be on the street. I mean, obviously, I'm only one person out of five.
No, it's a good conversation.
Chief, I don't know if you want to touch more on the requirements for the body worn cameras, I know that that was something that you.
So, you know, one of the things we did, before we jumped in, we talked about, you know, what is this commitment to the body worn camera? Obviously, we had some costs that we were concerned about, we were able to lower the cost. You know, storing in a cloud seemed to be the recommendation from the board, and Fincom, they like that idea of storing in a cloud. We were able to lower those costs. But the time it takes, we talked to Westrow, who's got the program up and running, so if you go and find somebody that's already doing it and say, what did you learn from doing this, and what would you do differently? And they said, they brought in a lieutenant just to handle body worn cameras. So they have three lieutenants in Westrow, and one is tasked simply with body worn cameras. I'm sure some other responsibilities probably fall in their lap in the absence of somebody, but that's their total role, is body worn cameras. That can be exhausting when, you have to imagine there's hundreds of hours or minutes to review, different angles, who came in at what time, and going through it. So it's not as easy as just hitting play and watching it, it's, there's requirements to how long we store it, who can view it, who wants to see it. Public, it's a public records request, it's the DA's office, so you can see that this thing spins off attorneys, want copies. So that's the downside of it, hopefully it shows us some good light, and it stops litigation that could be harmful to the town by saying, hey, just check it out, you don't have a case here, you know, so there's a reason why we pursued it, but it comes with costs, and that costs time. There are other grants that I think that we could pursue, but again, I'm asking the sergeants to do a lot of things that they should be supervising. They should be supervising patrol and keeping people out of lawsuits. I can't have them doing all the administrative duties because we've got a lack of people. Now, I'm not saying that a deputy chief couldn't go out in the Ropano call or do something like that, still a working position. I wouldn't get that if I had an admin.
So the cameras will go under the deputy chief?
Deputy chief or lieutenant, yes.
All the time.
Depending, but I don't, I don't want a single point of failure. So there'd be somebody that would be overseeing it, but there'd be somebody else that knows how to do it, should there be somebody on vacation, or.
So could there be an administrative sergeant? So in other words, I'm just saying, looking at money, finite resources, you know, couldn't we have still, with the same money as a deputy chief, a sergeant and a patrolman, you know, and have the sergeant be an administrative sergeant who does a lot of that in the office? And for the same money, we're also gonna get another patrolman who's out on the street. You know, because we are growing, and Dan's right, and.
Excuse me, David.
We're at Westrow.
The problem typically tends to be that the sergeants are in the police unit, so they're not a manager. They can only do so much and do so many roles before it becomes a conflict with their brother offices, or sister offices, and they say, hey, that's a grievance, and we're not, you know, so they're not management, that's the problem with the administrative side.
But would that be alleviated?
Before, and the union said no to the terms of creating the position, because their demands were too high.
So would that be alleviated then with my initial thoughts of having an admin whose specific role is to support you and Gary with the grant writing, with the payroll, with all of that? So that the additional sergeant and patrolman could actually be on the street, patrolling our streets? We have, what are the second highest amounts for road miles in the state of Massachusetts? Ten minutes here from one side of town to the other, so there's a way to structure this where they get the administrative support they need, and extra bodies in the street to cover our town, which is huge. Ten minutes for a cruiser to get somewhere sometimes in this town, and that could be the difference between life and death.
I, I think, I think we're mixing asks here, I think there's multiple asks. I think right now what the chief's saying is he has more administrative asks that are being applied on them with the body cam and up and coming technology that we need to address. And I think, like you said, the deputy chief can respond to an incident, but you're right, there is more road. I think we have multiple, multiple things here, and I think we have to decide what we want to address. Do we want to address the current issue on hand with how do we handle our current practices for body cams and everything like that? Or do we want to address, you know, the street? I mean, often, we also have to consider the benefit portions of the cost too, not just the salary, because that's, you know, you're adding two people, that's two more benefits, that's training, that's everything else, one person. You know, it's, it's, it's still a stiffing cost, but it's not as much as two.
I'll give you an example, just a neighbor, Selfridge, now they've got body one cameras going. They've now had a chief, deputy chief, and now you're assigning a second lieutenant. Like, we're trying to start with that by basically just having a structure in place, chief, deputy chief, lieutenant. Have the lieutenant oversee patrol, and make sure all the, all the needs of patrol being, you know, requests and things like that are being done, scheduling and things like that, have the deputy chief working on body one cameras, grants, and pulling a lot of the administrative side, also being a backup to, you know.
So with those questions, what's the, what's the salary we're looking for for a deputy chief?
I think for the year was at one.
For a total year was probably about, I want to say one thirty-five to one forty. So let's go one forty, we'd rather not get caught, under, underestimated, so let's say one forty. What is the cost for an administrative role like a Mary or a Kara?
Fifty-six to sixty.
Okay, and what is the cost for patrolman? Not in detail, just based.
Probably say probably sixty-five, seventy.
So we could take that route.
But you also have to factor in benefits for all those persons, so if it doesn't.
Correct, benefits for either, they either need benefits for admin and a patrolman, or benefits for a deputy chief, either way. We need the benefits no matter what, and to this point, I know, what is it, like twenty grand, I think, for a family plan for the town, or at least it used to be, for benefits, so obviously we have to incur that for one or two.
Okay.
But for the same, basically for the same money of a deputy chief. We could give them administrative support and patrolman's body, and the difference then to Pete's point would just be an additional twenty thousand in benefits for the other person, if they went on, if they took the benefit plan.
Okay, or if what she is saying, the deputy, the deputy chief, right, will freed up the time for the people that are now already working on those things. So that, those people have more time to go on the streets, which are already doing it.
But people who are, they're not on the street.
A lot of administrative things.
Right, but the people who are doing it now are Dan and Gary, correct? The sergeants and patrolmen aren't, so you're not gonna take people and put them back on the street, they're not off the street now.
The sergeants are, the sergeants are.
The sergeants are taking on a lot of administrative.
So you're saying the sergeants are doing the body.
A lot of administrative stuff, that we have no choice but to task them with.
Because I've been working on one of the targets, I'm a grant.
So either way, the deputy chief for an administrative role.
Basically, all the sergeants know the role, they can work together.
So David wants a two for pairs of one?
Basically.
And you're trying to.
Because the administrative role still lets the sergeant go back on the street.
The ones that are, I'm, I'm.
Right, so Vascha, basically, the administrative person still allows that sergeant to not do it, and go back on the street.
So my, my only concern with adding an administrative, which would be, you already have an administrative assistant in that role currently, is that an equivalent role?
I would suggest the way we have the town selectmen's office.
Who's in charge of that person, so who would that person solely report to? If you add another administrator, is that gonna bump heads in that, in the office, having two administrative? And then are they equal, are they both doing, because then you're running to your, your pay equity.
I would see it as similar to what we have in the selectmen's office with Mary and Kara.
Because I know we had the same issue in a finance, in one of our finance offices that we fixed, because there was two people of equal, equal value, or equal rate of pay in the same office, and a lot of it, a lot of them, they bumped heads a lot. So we fixed that by, it's easier when you create a structure, like Danny was saying, where there's a clear, so you have an, you have an administrative, you have a step-up from administrative, like an assistant department head, then you have a department head in the office.
So how do we deal with it?
Clear role.
So how do we deal with it in our office, because we have two? We have Mary and Kara, and one of Kara's responsibilities is grants.
Yeah.
Is there enough administrative, I mean, because obviously the roles kind of would clash, just part of that, that deputy chief would be administrative, but other, other parts of it are Leo, you know, you need that Leo-based background to do. Is there enough that an admin could fill the time, or is it more on the Leo end and the admin's sliver of that time?
Yeah, I want to pay, basically, to sum it up, a lot of the conversation, and it's an important conversation to have, no matter where we go. If we're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars, right, I wanted to really make sure we look at this and say, can this be done in a way where they get the administrative support they need, and we get the bodies that we need in the street? Because I still think we need more bodies on the street.
Right.
And get basically both out of this, because I don't want to see us down the road paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars for an executive management position, basically.
Yeah.
That, I just think, down the road, I don't want to find out, well, we made this move to a hundred and forty K, and it's being underutilized.
Right.
Well, we could have done it the other way and actually gotten multiple people for the same budget impact.
Yeah, totally.
I, I think, my take on it is Dan understands his business better than anybody in this room does. And there's a huge difference between running a police department or running a selectmen's office.
I'm well aware of this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we can make that, that's not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison. Dan knows, Dan knows what he's looking at, he's, he doesn't strike me as the type of person that's wasteful by nature.
Dan's not wasteful, but, you know, to tell me about the needs, and I never claimed to be a police officer, police sergeant, lieutenant, chief. I couldn't do the job, as I mentioned earlier, I'd kill myself, couldn't do the job. It takes a special person, but I still have to look at it as running a town like a business.
Yeah.
And if I have the ability to give Dan and Gary administrative support, and give our taxpayers and other officer on the street for the same money, that to me makes much more sense in supporting the community, supporting them, and supporting the town's budget. If they say that doesn't work, then that doesn't work. But, I mean, we've, we've held these conversations and watched our budget every year, right? And we know that as the town continues to grow, they're going to need more police officers, we're gonna need more patrolmen, we're gonna need more sergeants. We're going to need that, it's unavoidable, just like the school discussion next year, it's just kicking the can down the road. So my reason for bringing this up was exactly as I mentioned, is there a way to basically give them the administrative support they need to do at least offload a lot of that, and give them another body?
Just for clarification.
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
What is your train of thought against that?
Just clarification, I don't envision the lieutenant working days. But I don't, I mean, I think he's a, or he or she is a fixture on three to eleven with the bulk of handling patrol issues. And that he, he or she would be able to respond to a call, if there was, I don't mean to say that, but there would be administrative tasks. When they're not helping somebody, they could be working solely on that, and they could direct people, you know, task-oriented people.
And they're not just solely responsible for patrol, they also, I know Gary deals a lot with animal control, and then obviously they oversee all of dispatch too, so those are too big. Between patrol and dispatch, and then adding animal control on top of that, but they, I know he does oversee a lot of that, too, so.
And Dan, I think you understand, I'm just trying to give you as much as I can for the same money.
We can have a difference of opinion, still respect one another.
Yeah, I just want to see if I can get you more bodies for the same money.
I'm curious what our friends on Fincom think about the overall budgeting.
I'm curious what our friends on FinCom think about the overall budgeting aspect of staffing aside. But budgeting, how do you guys feel about absorbing this?
Kristen's smiling the whole time.
Knowing that we're going to be, that will be pumping into, to, to, to the operating budget come May.
All right, so my, my, my first take, and I won't speak now. I've actually not seen this piece of paper before tonight. And now I'm trying to absorb this all, okay, and understand how it's all going to fit in. As far as this one particular issue goes, and that's going to be different. I'm with the, the chief knows his, I'm with you, Steve. The chief knows his business. And Pete believes that a deputy is the best bet, all right? I did feel it's kind of ironic that right after you reinstated the stipends to everybody, you then talked about, well, if we put this position in, we may have to cut next year. Well, now why would we put the stipends in?
I got no problem taking the stipends right back out. I got no problem taking the stipends right back out. I didn't ask for them back.
Again, this was the discussion I'm hearing. I'm trying to absorb it. We're trying to, you know, this is Charlie's first meeting. He's probably saying, what did I get myself into, okay?
Charlie, it's not part of the conversation. You signed up for a three-year tour if you can't go anywhere.
I'm looking for a little more time, Bill, to be honest with you.
No, it's both.
To absorb some of this.
No, I don't.
But on this one particular issue, I have to agree with the chief.
So what is the next step to it?
So I also agree with Hank, and I would agree with the chief. I like to put faith in the people that run our departments. And if they say they need X, I'm going to go with X. I'm not going to try to turn it into Y and Z. I just, we have full-time employees, they know what they're doing, like, you know, it's just, let them operate. I don't want to debate the weeds. But also, yeah, I, I agree with you. If you, if you think that, you know, the deputy chief position is important and you think that it might present a hole in the, in the future, then, you know, why would we put the stipends back?
Personally, I, I'd be happy to pull the stipend right back out. And I'm not even kidding. I mean, I know it's, it's a bit of a, of a, of a whiplash. And I think it was Pete who brought it up, and I think rightfully so, that based upon the reduced budget from the W. Charlton District, they freed up a little cash. And stipends was one of the more controversial things. And I was mortified, so yeah, let's put them back in this year. And hopefully, we can do it next year. My, I, I suppose my point is, when it comes to new growth next year, I don't know what it's going to be. But if we're going to say yes to this now, my assumption is because it's a full-time employee, that it's such a very important position hypothetically, or how, how are we handling it? That we would all agree that if, let's say, we did have to get stipends again, okay, they're, they're right back out next year. Because this takes priority over a lot of the other things that we might want.
Yeah, because I mean, I don't know how much the stipends add up to, but certainly, it would at least help alleviate or offset costs of insurance benefits for an employee.
So, I mean, just going back to how, how this unrolled. Last year, when you were doing the budget, the stipends were taken out to meet the school, school committee's ask. The school committee lowered their ask. So my rationale, if we took something out to meet their ask, they're no longer asking for that money, put it back in. This is a new ask that wasn't available at that time. So if it comes to May and we need to reevaluate, then we reevaluate in May.
And it's not all about us.
I'm with Pete on that a hundred percent.
That's how it unrolled.
And it's not just about us. There's other people on the board. It's hard enough to put the people on the board and serve, you know? So this is just a little token of appreciation.
And again, town meeting can do whatever they want too. Let's forget that.
Yeah, I mean, the warrant's not closed. So if you guys decide next, your next meeting, you know, we thought about it, we don't agree with it, it's easy enough to take it off.
But what is expected from us with the chief's ask?
I guess just to kind of agree to add it to the warrant. So we'll bring you a draft warrant, because we'll have the warrant next meeting. I'm sure we're going to have the draft warrant to close. And then you're also going to get a draft warrant with motions that we're going to take a stance on that you agree or disagree with. And then that goes forward to town meeting.
So we do have to define it?
At least by next meeting, yes.
Yeah, if we want to agree.
So the goal is, I think, exactly, to close the warrants, we don't have anything new.
Not today, but by next meeting.
By next meeting, yeah.
Is that already in here?
Oh, they are.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think we close it type of.
I thought it was next meeting.
Now, but for those at home and those in the audience, when we close the warrant, basically that's saying, you can't add on any more articles.
Yeah.
That's not the same, we don't tweak the ones that are there, especially on the financial numbers.
Okay.
So hey, I'm sure that we're going to have like, like, like a joint meeting again to like, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah, well, I was always going to say twenty-six. Yeah, yeah, to actually go through these things in absolute detail. I think tonight's the first draft run-by to kind of get a feel of.
Yeah.
So when, when, when we do do the numbers.
Yes.
What do we as a holistic group want to see that we can make recommendations on and/or changes at our joint meeting?
Yeah, so then, yeah, this is like our draft, so that will go forward so I can put all the numbers in with the motion.
Is your deputy chief money already in this?
Yes.
Yes.
In the warrant, yeah.
So it's already, it's in the budget? You're not, you're not going to have.
Well, it's not in your FY twenty-four budget. It's on, it's in the, it's in the warrant for the town to vote on it, town meeting to add to the budget for our twenty-four.
I would recommend, just for, if nothing else, expediency sake, that my two cents, that we include it for now.
Okay.
And then we have a more perhaps in-depth discussion, to David's point, which I think was an excellent discussion, around, is this, A, do we still want to allocate it come our joint meeting, when Hank and Tina get a chance to take a look at this? And then B, if, if we want to allocate an amount, is this the best use of the money? And that way, I think Hank and Tina have a better chance to review this, get more information. We now know what Dan and, you know, NLT are, are looking for. So during our next meeting, we, we, we could have a larger conversation, inclusive of what selectmen singers, you know, putting up for debate. Not that I don't want to talk about this.
That, that sounds like that part's already dead, so. You never know.
No, no, okay. But this is to be added to the next meeting agenda?
Right, when we go through the, the motions.
Yeah, so you're, you're going to get the whole warrant, we'll have, you'll get, you'll have all the warrant with the motions on it. And we'll see your itemized, like you're doing. It will just like your town meeting, with all the itemizing and everything out. And then that's when we, the both committees will vote on whether they agree with the motion, support the motion or not support the motion. So you'll see all of that next time.
And finance will definitely have that weighed in.
Um, and then the last item that we have on here is for the fire substation.
I figured you wanted just to.
Oh, and it's only ten of eight, oh, this is going to be fun.
I figured we'd talk about that as, you know, essentially kind of combining Article Six.
Yeah.
And we have a discussion on our warrant.
Yeah, yeah, old business.
Might as well just handle it all together.
Yeah, so we'll address Andrew's nice letter here first, because in that, depending on what stance we take, would be my second question about our bond proceed money?
Actually, can we even, this might make your life a little easier first then. Can we have a discussion about, do we want to do this for October first? Because if the answer is no, then we don't even need the discussion.
Right.
I agree.
So I, I don't want to cut your legs out from like, on you, but I would hate to see you go down a path and then suddenly have us go, yeah, we're not going to go to October. That's, that's. Oh, I'm sorry, were you bringing somebody on?
I just brought Jeff on.
Jeff?
Jeff Shaw from Context. I know he's, you know, at the last meeting, he was going to be on the side to chime in if we needed any technical questions.
Hey, Jeff.
So.
So I don't know, did you guys, I set this up, did you get the packet from, so Andrew and, well, mostly Andrew, but we work together. He, he's really good at writing things. I'm just good at the numbers, you know, us, us number people.
This is an excellent summary, honestly, I think it's really, really good.
Yeah, Andrew and I work, our brains try to figure out the best way to kind of fund the project. So I guess the main question is, do we, are we putting it forward for town meeting? Because if we are, then I, we have to involve other people to get articles ready for us, so.
I've spoken about this a lot, both online and here, and over the past couple of years. I will be brief, because I'm really genuinely curious what everyone else thinks. I do not believe we should go in October. I know it's going to cost more money to go in May. I am one hundred percent in favor of the project. I think there are other options to opt, to our option three, that Ashley and Andrew will talk around about, partially funding with a debt exclusion, partially funding it with the operating budget. I can't see any way that this, and town meeting is October eleventh. So we're saying in less than a month, we're going to agree to the funding and be able to socialize this and then get a ballot vote ready for November that will also pass. Because I'll be honest, I will hold up, if, if the majority of the board wants to go forward with this, and by that I mean three, I will hold up a ballot vote in November. But if either one of these things fails, in my next twenty months, I will vote against every single fire station proposal there is, because I'm not going to ask what happened last time on this ask of, all right, well, we, well, it failed last time, so we're going to tweak it, and we're going to ask it again and again and again, until we get what we want. So this isn't a threat. This is just a simple, think about like the strategy of, can we get this passed in October? Because if this fails, this could be dead in the water for years. So I don't think it has a good chance of passing in October. Because we have less than a month from today to even socialize what the plan is, as well as the funding. So I'm going to stop and just let everyone else talk.
So I'm just going to put out there that there's really not much more to, for me to add to what Bill said. I, I do believe at this point, we go forward in October, number one, it's an automatic failure. And then we, we're, we've just lost everything we're trying to accomplish. So I agree with Bill that this, this needs to hold till May and give us time. Also, one of the reasons I think we brought this forward, and I don't know about Bill, but the original view I had anyway was to have this done within the limit, right? So we're not going to ask for a tax increase. I believe, I may read it wrong, but I believe some of what I read is allowing for the school getting more money in the next budget and having part of the fire substitution be then through a tax increase. I think that's a, personally, just a recipe for failure. I, I, you asked them to raise taxes for this, when we had already discussed about, at least my, my desire to get it under the limit. I'm just, I'm just saying, so for me, not October, it's May, so I'm a no for October. So you, you still have to get three votes, but I'm a no for May. And I want to see it done within the levy limit. And then if other departments, schools, anybody else wants something extra, they can ask for the override to pay for that. I don't want to ask for that for fire. I want us to fund fire within the limit and not ask our residents for a tax increase to do that. That's just me, and I won't say anything else, you all know where I stand.
So what do you think you would do, or we will all have to do different from now to October, that we will do from now to May?
You think you can sell this to the public in a month? I don't.
I, I, I don't, I'm not, I'm asking you honestly, what is that you're planning on doing?
I think we have to have, I think we have, well, as far as, well, again, I should let all you, I think I said my piece. I think you can't sell this to the public in a month. I think you don't have the solution right now to even fund it the way I envisioned it. And I, I can't say for Mr. Borowski, but I believe he was along the same view of how to fund this relatively closely.
I'm flexible on this one.
He's more, he's, he's flexible. But part of that was the same thing, within the levy limit. Right now, we don't have that in front of us. And I think you don't have time to sell it to the public. You don't have time to, to get it properly presented to them. We don't have, I think, a proper way to fund it. That was the original intent when we pushed this forward, was we can, we all talked about this, within the limit, within the limit and not raising taxes. And now we're going to come out with one month and say, by the way, we want to do this, and we have to raise your taxes to make it happen. I just think that historically speaking, you look back at everything you've done and every failure, this is how we've done it. Rush it through, go back on things we said, change it. I think you're better off buying a few more months. Look at the funding mechanisms, find a way to get it within the levy limit. And if other departments want more next year, school, fire, town, anybody else, let them ask for the override. Fire needs this, there's no question. And I think if you put it through in October and you do it with a tax increase tied to it, you're not going to get it. And then I think Bill's right, you won't get it in October, and they're going to say no to you every time you ask for it for the next couple of years.
You know, I think looking at this, we have our yeas and we have our nays automatically. The big question is, did we convince enough of the nays by lowering the price of the project to convert to yeas? I mean, that's not going to, that doesn't matter if it's October or May, they're going to stay their peace. I mean, this is, we could string this out forever, it's been an ongoing issue in Charlton. You know, either we take a, draw a line in the sand and say, do we need, we need this? Do we move on as a community? Or do we, do we continue to put ourselves at risk? I mean, that's, it's going to be the same question whether it's October or May, but it's going to cost us more in May.
Hundred percent agree.
I mean, so that's.
Just real quick to David's point of the, at the school getting more money. Andrew and I figured it based on, because of that whole Chapter Seventy formula, where, through us this year, which made the split even further, is that based on how we're growing and, I mean, obviously, we want to grow. And Dudley's not, not really any effect of our own. This wasn't just handing them more money, this was basically saying, if we're in the same predicament now, where the split would be matching kind of how our growth is, because that, every time you have new growth, it's going to catch up with you in two years.
It's going to get wider and wider.
Right, so we kind of based it, said, okay, well, if we grow X amount, the school's going to get at least this much of that money, because they're fifty percent of our budget. So that number automatically, just based on that Chapter Seventy formula, is going to split anyway. So that's kind of where we came up with the, with the school numbers, basically saying, we don't really have a choice. The state telling us what we, what our net capital contribution is.
Any saved net with extra monies for the schools for the year.
We essentially just to project out.
To be like realistic.
Used, matched what our annual growth factor was. So if it was a projected three percent, you know, three percent growth in, in taxes, that's what we used for the school system.
Yeah, just based, based off whatever Prop Two and a Half was, plus whatever new growth we were going to budget for that year, adding Amazon and adding LNG in, just kind of using whatever, and this is insane, like, hey, if we had, okay, maybe we're going to get new local receipts, we just like level funded. This is just strictly on whatever property values we have. So between Amazon, whatever, any new projects that we could foresee come in, whatever, we grew based on that Prop Two and a Half growth. We took a portion of that and applied it to the school, because we don't, that's not, like, we're saying, we have no choice.
Right, so it just creates another problem then.
Right.
Regardless, even if you, even if you said, we can give you this, I don't believe that a, a, a month or less is enough time to educate.
Yeah, that was just, I was just saying.
Oh, no, I, I know, I'm just saying that even if we eliminate one of the issues, the other issues are still there.
Yeah, we tried to give you the most realistic option one, which is under the levy limit that we could. And as you can, if you were to look, you can see that by year three, we're in the hole already. And that's, just trying to be realistic.
I, I won't be the dead horse, I'm, I'm with Bill on May.
Yeah, okay. But either way.
I, I, I think this time around is far different than the public safety buildings. I think it's far different. And everything that I've seen on social media and everyone that I've spoken to about it, it's, I, I struggle to even see a negative comment on it. Everybody knows it, and they know we need it, they think it's reasonable. As far as under the levy limit, when we were first thinking, it was thirteen million, we thought we'd be able to, or eleven million, we thought we could do it on the levy limit. Now it's coming in more expensive. So if it's seventeen million now, including two and a half million in soft costs, we're going to be looking at twenty in May.
I thought the seventeen included the soft.
But, no, no, I know, it, it does.
But you're looking at probably inflationary pressure of anywhere at four to five hundred thousand dollars come May. Which I openly, which I openly.
Right, and so we're not disagreeing with you, but I'd rather see it be at two million more and pass than two million less than fail.
Okay.
But, but if we can't do it under the levy limit now, we're not going to be, we're not going to be able to do it.
Right, in which case, I think it fails now.
On May, so what's the difference? I don't understand.
And I think you have a better, as I said, even if you eliminate the financial aspect of it. I, I don't, you can have the votes, but you know where I'm saying, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue this to death. I don't care if you have the money and you raise your taxes one dollar.
And I promise I don't hold up any like veto power on the.
Right, I just don't think you have the time to sell it. And I think if you put it through in May, it's going to be seen that way, and it's going to fail. And I hope I'm wrong. I support it, we need it. Like Bill, I'm not going to go out there and campaign against it. I, I, we need it, I just think it's gonna fail if it goes in October.
I mean, honestly, what is gonna be the socialization campaign that we're gonna accomplish between October and May? I mean, we have a limited social media following, it's the same people that are following, it's the same people that show up to the town meetings. I mean, how are we gonna go out and what's gonna be our strategy to socialize this with the greater community and get it better turned on?
Which, by the way, is one of the reasons why you need more time in a month.
Okay, so, not my opinion, respect all of your opinions.
I don't, I won't say another word, I'm not saying another word on this.
No, 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 my, no, 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 on, on, on my note. I think we have been at it for so long, since I got on this board, we have been talking about the fire station of some sorts. I think that people are more than ready, we don't even know if the fire station, substation we have will stand until whenever we start to build. The soft cost alone is, what is it, one point four million? Just on that note alone, uh, why would we, why would we prolong it more? It's just getting, people are getting tired of it, so I'm not, I, I, I completely hear you, I, I, I get what you're saying, but from my experience, I, I just don't see how much more we can do. People, people know it, people really know it, and I think we can actually get opposite effect, people got, getting angry, frustrated, and they just don't wanna hear it about it. So we're not building the, uh, you know, safety building, we're just simply trying to bring safety to this town. This, this, this is not gonna stand out to May. So that's my ten cents as of putting this on October, I'm absolutely with it, it has to go on it, we have been talking about it enough.
Madam Chair, just for formality's sake, can I ask one of the board members to make a motion either way?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me.
As to how we're gonna fund it, um.
So I'm very yet to.
I'm completely against option two, that, I, I, I completely nod with putting this under the levy limit, that's, that's my ten cents. I don't like to have no money in my bank account, that's on my personal note, so I'm not gonna use all the money we have to just simply to squeeze something into it. We don't need it. I, I'm, I'm undecided between option one, option three, but I'm definitely with the debt exclusion of some sort. People are not mining to pay taxes, they just have to pay taxes for something that they can get back, so that's my, my, my vote on that. Also, that's just my, that's a question in my statement, hypothetically speaking, if we will go with the full debt exclusion on that, on that, on that project, and I know the schools are coming and everything else, uh, can we, and say, we, we get that growth that, that, that we are very happy about, we can always pay it off.
So you can't pay it off earlier, but I can, I can opt to not use the exclusion money. So what happens, there's a formula when, when we calculate revenue to go to, for budget purposes, there's a portion in it that has a, um, the exclusion. So you get your prop two and a half, plus your new growth, and then your exclusion comes on after that. I can opt to not use the full value of the exclusion for that year, we can just, we can pay for it within the levy limit.
That's, that's what I understand.
Just because we went to get it, it's nothing.
Doesn't mean that we have.
This isn't normal, those towns don't do this. However, if we had a bunch of new growth, and we opted to do a full debt exclusion and we don't need it, I can opt not to use it.
Because we also, we're hoping about that growth with Amazon and, and, and everything else. So, to another note, with the schools or whatever else we might need, the roofs or whatever, by, but funding this, we have to fund something, we have to put the debt exclusion on something sometime soon.
So my, my advisement is always to go for a debt exclusion over an override first, only simply because a debt exclusion falls off at some point, or an override is a permanent tax increase. So if people are against increasing their taxes, why force them to pay a permanent increase over, over just a short term?
And but, and but leaving the extra cash in our budget, showing that wouldn't that stronger our bonding?
So anytime you look more favorable towards, um, and Andrew and I were just working this with our, uh, financial advisor, basically what the, what they're gonna look for to increase our bond rating is how cash fluid you are, and then how much growth you have in town, so obviously, the more growth that we have.
So the more money in our bank, and the better the, and the better the, the stronger the bonding.
It's a portion of it, yeah. And there's a, another portion, obviously, if we're, um, I forget what David said the other day, but basically, it's, and who else is out in the market? So if you have another town who's like more favorable than you are, and they're comparing you to them, that could hurt you. But, um, according to our financial advisor at the moment, he thinks that we have a very strong possibility of going from a double A plus to a triple A. So, we've been working.
And which would be, which will help us more, uh, going with that exclusion or running under the levies?
I don't know if it's, I don't know if that portion super matters, I think it's kind of a internal discussion on what we think is best for the town. Obviously, going full debt exclusion, you leave yourself with more operational money for, if somebody else needed it. Going partial obviously restricts you, so you could potentially have to go for an override if you needed money for the school. But it's kind of where we wanna make the standpoint. Yeah, so it's kind of where we wanna make the standpoint, if you feel like you want, you need a fire station more, and you wanna be able to pay for that within your levy, then that's the stance that you're gonna go on, but just know that your school could potentially come back and you might need an override.
Right.
This all just depends on how we wanna operate as the town, what we wanna do. So that's, I don't think that matters to the bond rating company, yeah, obviously, the more fluid we look, the better.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I was just trying to cut off conversation before, rather, I was hoping we could, again, with respect, make a motion to say that this is gonna go in October, and then I was hoping Ashley and Andrew could go through all three options, especially for the folks at home, and I'm sure Hank, Jeremy, Kristen, who haven't seen this probably yet, or if you haven't.
No, we saw this.
Oh, this one, yeah, okay, cool, yeah, or at least the folks in the audience, so any of those.
Yeah, the other piece might not have the very end of that.
So, again, if it, if anyone could have used.
Are they voting, yeah, are they voting on this?
Ju- just to say that, that the assumption is that it's going in October or not.
Since we have FinComs here, can we just have them jump away in, um, October versus May?
Oh, yeah.
On this particular issue, if you were going totally under the levy limit, I'd say do it in October. But if you're gonna, and, and I'm, I always tend to go more toward, um, overrides, you're gonna have to sell that, do it in, do it in May.
You guys?
So I'm slightly, slightly different. I think you, you actually all have no trouble passing this to town meeting, the public safety building passed at town meeting. It's the ballot that you have to sell, but that's not until November, so you actually have double the time that you think you have, right? The other thing I wanna point out is, when the public safety building failed, I think it was almost entirely due to sticker shock, not because people didn't believe the need. You've basically removed the sticker shock here, especially how you did option three. You're saying that the debt service, uh, in year one is, is a million, wait a minute, do I read this correctly?
Yeah, do about a million.
About, about a million the first year?
Well, that's under the levy, I think it is. So it's. Oh, that, this number, it would be, this number would be the pay down, we're gonna try to pay down one point four million.
Right, right, but see, this project borrow over levy, you know, one, one million year thirty, one fifty one K.
But, yeah. Yeah. Yes, that would be. Yeah.
So, I mean, you could tell me the average taxpayers' increase on that?
It'd be one sixty one.
I roughly, I, I don't know what that would be, what we're saying, I don't know what the rate is here.
Maybe the one sixty one, one sixty one, twenty seven.
Oh, it is one sixty one, all right, so, so you have it on there already, thank you, you guys are very.
But that would impact on, um, the, if I said twenty seven, right?
Yeah, wouldn't it take that time we built and went out to borrow, we figured it wouldn't take place until about that year? Because we're gonna try to get by, if we go with option three, we try to get by with our current money to get us through to that point to, so we wouldn't have to.
Because again, as reminded, people at home, they don't know, they, they don't know what option three is.
Well, we just went through the whole education process for that public safety building, I mean, Captain Barton and a whole bunch of other firemen really.
I'm just gonna respect, remind the finance committee and members of the board of selectmen, the last time we brought this in front of town meeting, it was a fire department only, we asked money for a feasibility study to move forward, and it was soundly, not soundly, it was rejected. So, again.
But the public safety building passed for there.
Correct, but a standalone fire department failed.
What was it?
Yes, it did, yeah.
The standalone fire department failed.
Yeah, and also with the public safety building, it wasn't sticker shock, they passed it on that, knowing the, the cost. What failed it was the funding mechanism, which was the tax increase.
Right.
That's what failed it, not the price.
If you want October, I'm happy to like now transition to, to, or after Jeremy, or whoever it goes, like, at least, just till we talk about funding. I, 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 I would just like it on record that the board, either, either way.
Right, decide October or May, so that they can know whether we're doing this in October or May.
I think too, having a unified stance and having everyone for the project is a big thing too, because I feel like a lot of it, it was a kind of a split board, and I think a split between police and fire, that not everyone was for the project. So I think that threw a lot of people too, just from talks around town.
I think we were all for it the last time it was fire only, though, still didn't get it.
That was, yeah.
Who, who is going to be the, um?
So is there a motion?
You, you, one way or the other, for October?
What do you think?
October or May, is there a motion?
I mean, I'm all for keeping the cost down, but if, if you guys strongly think it's not going to pass, then obviously, we don't want to keep this bottom dead in the water.
There's only two of us that think it won't pass.
No, yeah.
I think it'll be close.
And I hope I'm wrong, I hope Kristen's right.
I think it will, but, but who is going to, um?
I'm all for it being cheaper, obviously, because of the money we have spent on something.
And it will be cheaper if it's passed as an October or November, I'm a hundred percent agree.
Correct, no one argues that.
Right, so I think we're gonna see it.
But what do we have to do if what if it doesn't pass? I mean, I feel it's gonna pass, but I'm saying hypothetically speaking.
If it doesn't pass, I will never vote for this again in my next twenty months.
I think you won't have a problem with October, it's, I think your, the, the debt exclusion might be, but if you have two months to push that debt exclusion out, knowing that it's, if whatever option we pick, whether it's full or partial, that might help you.
What can we do to push it, do we, do we have, do you have medicals to push it with a?
Yeah, I mean, we have.
With a new website?
Well, we gotta, we have to be very careful when it comes to using municipal resources to push things either way, you can give information.
Yeah.
No, 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 not that's what I mean, just for people absolutely.
How long did we have last time between, for public safety versus just the fire station only? Like, how long did we push information out there?
It's probably a sore, it's probably a sore topic, I thought we rushed the, the standalone fire.
And what I think we should have done is have the Amazon.
But, but there's, there's nobody here from the fire department tonight.
Correct.
So who is, who is, if we have to sell it in October, which I think, I actually feel we can, who's gonna be the cheerleaders on that? Is the fire department, is the, is it the building committee, is, is it us?
Not being serious, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not actually.
Where, where's the Robbie Barton in this project on that?
Where's the plan? To, to your point, where's the plan, and I don't see one, so because of which, I, I can't support it for October.
I think it's prob, I think it's probably gonna lie in the committee, but.
I have a plan. The one that we were, the presentation last night?
No, no, no. The discussion for a margin, a margin mainly.
A margin.
Cause I'm, I'll make a motion for May, if you want, because no one's making one for October, unless somebody wants to make one for October, but right now, we have no.
No, that's fine.
Because we really gotta talk about.
We have no direction for everyone else who's here.
No, okay, so, let's vote.
I'm kinda, I'm.
Well, there's no motion.
Though you have a motion, you have a motion, so let's come up with a motion.
Again, I, I make a motion that this get put on in October.
Okay, David.
I'm not seconding it.
Anybody to second?
I'll second it for discussion.
I got a few seconds.
It's really, Ed should, Ed should have been here.
We all want it to pass, it's one of the, this is, just so everyone's at home understands, this isn't a question of the different members of the board of selectmen or, or FinCom not agreeing on the need, right? Or where we wanna go, we all have the same destination in mind, it's just some people wanna turn left and some wanna turn right to get to the same destination, that's all.
We have to, to make a decision on this, folks, I mean, like, all five of us are, are like, elected, and we all have strong opinions.
I think everyone's gonna look to you guys for how they feel.
So you have a motion and a second for October. If there's discussion on it, great, I have no further discussion, otherwise, we should, then we should vote.
I don't think anyone's gonna convince anybody else at this point.
So you wanna call for the vote, there's no discussion?
Do you want more discussion?
I don't, I'm not.
I, I just think, you know, the point that there's no fire representation here, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Can we have a vote next meeting and bring the chief and make that decision that we?
So let me, let me ask you all.
That's yet another week.
Wait, 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 in all honesty, let me ask you in all honesty, if we put it off, is that gonna change your vote, possibly, mine either? So all we're doing is kicking the can down the road, when realistically, unless you think you're gonna change your vote, or you, or you,
I think.
we're just putting it back in a week or two for the same vote.
I'm not gonna change my vote, but, um.
There you go, so we should just vote.
I think the gosh is about is the question, I think that we, when in a room at a town meeting, when we can have people advocating for it, coming up to that stand, you know, to the microphone, advocating for it, being, you know, humanizing it, talking about it, we can talk about it right at the meeting, opposite today.
Correct, but people are looking for the fire chief to come here and lead the town, they're asking the board of selectmen to lead on it.
So I gotta say, I'm on the fence, and, and just like, chief, please sway me one way, the fire chief could sway me one way, what is that six, what is that six months gonna mean in lives? And response times and potential fatalities? So that's, that's the numbers I need to hear, how is, how is this time delay gonna affect our citizens if, if we do push it out?
If you get it sooner, obviously, it's better for the town, if it passes. If it fails, you don't have it in October, or probably for the next five years.
I mean, and honestly, we're gonna need the support of the fire department to help socialize this, they're the ones that are out on the street with everything, so.
Yeah, they have to.
Correct.
If we, we're not getting their stance, if he's like, yeah, it could wait, then, then that's, that's, that, that influences my decision, so I don't.
Can we wait until next meeting?
My only monkey wrench I'm gonna throw out there is your town, your election is prior to your town meeting. Are you gonna be able to put enough out there to have your debt exclusion vote first before your town meeting vote, which you can, that's fine, but do you guys feel comfortable having your debt, or, so your debt exclusion vote would have to be first, if that's how you're gonna go, and then your town meeting vote to authorize the project?
Which I'd be fine with.
Which is fine, you can do that, um, the only, or you'd have to have a, you'd have to hold a separate ballot vote for strictly just the fire station after town meeting. So it's just another cost for an election, so it's, it's really all to you guys, I mean, either way, I don't, I don't care.
Every week we wait from.
What was that, oh, oh, okay.
Two thousand dollars.
Election about two grand?
Something like that, maybe.
Every day that we wait from tonight is a day that we cannot campaign for October.
Right, I mean, you could also go for your town meeting, go in October, and then wait for ballot to push it out there, I mean, I mean, you have, you have lots of votes, but.
So I would say.
I mean, look at, like, you told me.
Yeah, that is a ballot, you, you, you're very true, yeah, it's very difficult.
But we can use the, like you said, to put the information out there, start propagizing the, the topic as, as itself without pushing it away.
Yeah, you could at least go out and say, yes, we agree with this project, we're gonna go for it in October, and then wait until May for your ballot.
I just know it's quarter past eight, and we haven't talked about funding it, and we're still talking about the date. So I would either wanna table this altogether, or say, well, we're, that we're gonna do it in October or May, so Andrew and Ashley can talk to us around funding, and then we can have a real fight.
I think it's like playing the roulette, and I don't like to take my risks, so I'm with Pete on this one, I wanna, I wanna have a chief here, I, I'm not gonna change my mind, I, I, I'm pretty sure.
Well, right now, you have a motion and a second, so you'd have to have the motion and a second withdrawn if you wanna put it off.
I'm not withdrawing my motion.
You can wait until next meeting and just address it, then we can see if the fire chief can be available for next meeting, and you can discuss it then before we pass. The warrant has to be, I mean, I know it's closed, the article's out there, so.
This is important.
He has his own shoulders in the way.
Huh?
Yeah. Sir Bill, yesterday, so a second of the motion is taken. So I think.
Or, or, or it's been withdrawn.
Yeah, I think you have no choice, but either to act on the motion and second now, or they have to be withdrawn. This isn't a town meeting where you can just adjourn and come back the next night. So you either vote, get your nays for October, or you have to withdraw the motion and the second, Bill's not withdrawing his motion.
So hit the vote.
I will be to Bill's chagrin. Bill's not withdrawing his motion.
Okay.
However, if the second was withdrawn, then there's no second. I could be wrong, but.
We did the second.
Political game.
Political game.
That might also make it die tonight, I don't know.
We get paid to make decisions, folks.
Yep, and I'm ready to make my decision. Although technically, we don't get paid.
Not for it.
I mean, if you make your decision any easier, the longer you wait, the less time you have to.
Correct.
Because I think by the time your next meeting, we have, what, two weeks till town meeting?
Yep, and you're gonna have two weeks to sell it.
Absolutely, and that's my concern, like, our, our next.
So if that's gonna, right, that's gonna change your vote, if you're waiting for the, if you're waiting for the fire chief to come next meeting, your next meeting is two weeks from today, which is.
Which, and he may or may not even be available.
Right, which puts you two weeks closer.
If he waits a month, it's too short. Two weeks is too short.
There you go.
So I, I would.
Just, just feed those out, okay?
I was even saying, chief, we need a representative from the fire department to express the values, I.
And, and, and we need to know who they're gonna select in the department to be cheerleaders on this as well, and what their game plan is.
So just.
So I'm, I'm actually changing my.
Right, so just to be clear, though, this is meaning that we're not gonna meet till September twenty sixth, at which point, we're hoping, but we don't guarantee to have feedback from the fire station, although the fire department, and in less than, roughly less than, or roughly two weeks later, we're gonna have a vote at town meeting.
So we have a motion, we have a second, neither which have been withdrawn, so we have to vote.
Correct.
Unless leave withdrawals, because I'm, I'm not withdrawing.
No.
So we have to take a vote.
Okay, go.
I'm.
Madam Chair?
If you're calling for.
Are you ready to vote?
Yes, I think so.
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me.
Okay, so the, the motion on the, the motion on the table is for this to go in October warrant.
The, the, the October town meeting.
The October town meeting warrant, so.
There's just a, it's not a roll.
Just, all right, everybody, okay, so we have a second and a, yeah, okay, so everybody in favor?
Not for October, no.
No, all right, then.
No.
Well, then, May, it is.
Not for.
We, we.
It's not, it's October, we didn't say.
To sell something that big.
So I'm gonna take the money that I put towards the fire station off for the cash.
It might be next October, we didn't say May, no, I'm just gonna pay. Adrian, you look like you're ready.
Come on, David. So May then.
So the money that's set on this sheet for fire station is gonna come off, we'll hold the free cash until we go for May.
Yeah.
So are we going for debt exclusion vote first then, or we wanna talk about that later?
I, we have, after we get to town, we have time to talk.
Right, so we see that how.
And, and by then, we'll have a, a better set of eyes on our, on our growth numbers and with the schools.
I just wanna play them, that's all I'm looking for, and I just don't think we have.
And we'll have a little fire to talk about what we're gonna do to make it work.
Yeah.
Well, you're gonna stand in front of the school and advocate for the May. I'm gonna take that.
All right.
Awesome, it's, all right, so then what's next?
But that's, that's all we have for capital then.
What about anything else from finance?
The fifteen's in there, right, for the tactical, you said.
Yeah, so I'll, I will add that in there.
I'm bringing out frustration, trying to use me.
I will add that in there, and then I'm gonna take off the fire station and then.
See, we make sure.
We scare them away.
We'll talk to you soon.
Thank you, everybody.
Now everybody else is saying, all right, how are we gonna make this earlier from now?
All right, where are we now? So we good? So now go to new business?
Uh, actually, I think we have to talk about the other things on the line.
Oh, where are they?
So the, um, article for the bond proceeds will table until we figure out we're doing fire station? And then the rest of them are all by law amendments, I think, right?
Yes.
So the bond proceed, proceeds we're going to go to the, um, the pay down, right?
So we have bond proceeds, we're going out to bond from the public safety building money that we borrowed to get us to the cap, the design phase in South Charlton Dam. So we got proceeds we're going out to borrow, and that's around ninety eight, little over ninety eight thousand, that has, well, it's not from South Charlton, it's just for the public safety building. That has, well, it's not from South Charleston, just from the public safety building. Um, we have to use that ninety eight thousand on a like project. So some of that's gonna be the same number of years that we're borrowing for, so twen-, anywhere from twenty to thirty years, plus a like project, so like a building or some project that we can borrow under the same description, same terms that we borrowed for the public safety building. Um, so we have to use those proceeds towards something, so we figured why not save them for, we don't really have any other big projects that we can borrow for twenty years on, because your borrowing limits on things, aside from buildings, are usually smaller than twenty years. So we're gonna save them for using them for a building. So we figured the fire station, since that was our next building, was the perfect use. So we have to have an authorized project to be able to move those bond proceeds. So we'll table that. We'll remove that article off, bulk of warrant.
We just weren't sure whether or not we had to do it as a separate article, or if we could do it under the same article, so.
Separate, right. Yeah. That was maybe my question to our financial advisor, if we were gonna go for it in October, so I'll just, I'll tell him we're just going until May.
Take, take it out. For May.
Yeah, and then I think everything else that was just capital, we have a handful of bills of prior year, we have a couple budget amendments, some money moving around, and then the rest are bylaws. I think bylaw matters. Um, they want us to do it sooner rather than later, but it's not, like I said, like they, it's not gonna go away. But obviously, the bank gave us that money, so we should use that before we pay all the debt off. So we have, we've already been paying on that, I wanna say for three, Jesus, I think three years?
Three years.
Yeah, so, it, 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 at all points at this point. I think it's about, been about three years, so you're three years into your twenty year term. So you should, we should, I, I would advise, and your financial advisor would advise you to use that sooner rather than later, so you're, because you're, I mean, paying for it, but you're getting the proceeds back, so.
Alright, so the remaining ones, the, the last three that we have, so articles eight, nine, and ten are all bylaw changes requested. Uh, we had previously discussed the true word appointed position, changing that, um, so that language came directly from our legal counsel as to how that would be written out. Number nine was the amendment to municipal charges lien bylaw. Essentially, we adopted that bylaw in the spring and uh, just missed one of the requests, so this was just an addition of one more, uh, line to that for fines issued under the building code. And the last one was also requested through the building commissioner's office, essentially amending our streets and sidewalks bylaw. Currently, the bylaw addresses obstructions to streets, but doesn't, doesn't, um, address obstructions to sidewalks. So we'd be looking to essentially ensure that, uh, nobody could obstruct a sidewalk without written permission from the board of selectmen, uh, similar to that in roads, in that they are unable, that they don't, um, restrict the access by, uh, to the ADA, or American individuals.
Are people grandfathering on that? I'm just thinking of like honestly, all that huge road going down Main Street.
Right, so it's more or less if somebody comes in and.
Put, put.
You know, intentionally. Um, this area, you know, we are looking at updating the sidewalks. I, they just happened to be last week. We're learning on the engineering.
I mean, generally, I have no problems. I mean, I'm, I'm just.
But no, this doesn't give us license to now go in and stop, tell everybody they have to, you know, move their mailboxes. But it's more or less is a tool to say you can't park your car halfway out into the road, block the sidewalk, because somebody in a wheelchair is trying to get in.
Out here on Main Street, we have telephone poles in the middle of the side. No, seriously, right? So I'm thinking that's it for the walk.
Alright.
Last call for the October thing, because once we close it, actually technically speaking, the board will.
I mean, the board has license.
Yeah. But last chance.
Are you on, are you unsure?
No, no.
So stop.
Alright, motion to close the ward. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
God. Thanks to our friends at FinCom. We'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Sure, welcome.
September twenty sixth is your next meeting, right? We're just gonna do a joint on their meeting again, and we'll vote on all the, yeah, to make sure we have. You want to still work?
Yes.
Okay.
So what's the special summer? I wanted that.
Yeah, we, we can do it out, so we'll just, we can kind of go through.
Hey, do you need, do you need us to come to yours? Do you need us to come to yours?
No, we'd like our still meetings to go nice and smooth and smart.
Oh, yeah, a normal meeting would have been tomorrow.
Alright, that's two days.
Alright, moving on. So we're, the new business.
Alright. Back to things, so then, thank you.
Yes.
You mean the twentieth?
Alright, application for special alcoholic beverage license for the overlook, New Default Festival.
I do.
Essentially, they are looking, I think, for a, uh, the overlook is looking for a special alcoholic beverage license to be used at the Fall Festival, September thirtieth. Uh, the license would cover September twenty eighth through October first, with the stip, uh, stipulation recommended by the police chief.
Uh, to the chair, I move to approve the special alcoholic beverage license submitted by the overlook, and the date on the license will be September twenty ninth through the twenty third, Friday the twenty ninth through October first, with the stipulation recommended by the police chief Dow.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Next, um, you guys already got some information on this, but, uh, the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization is, um, looking for an appointed official, um, as a selectman from the Southwest subregion. Their meeting is tomorrow. They're looking for interest if there's any on the board that wants to represent.
I think it's Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Thursday. They need to go.
Can you log in? Unfortunately, I have a, I have a. So, Andrew, through you, okay, Basha, through you, I'm sorry. So Andrew, is it just, like, do the five, do these five people, um, meet to, to vote on who can represent them?
So, they're looking for essentially selectmen from the Southwest, Southwest subregion, so essentially the towns that are surrounding us, to select a select person from those to be one of the five that represents the Central Mass area.
If no one else can do it, I will log in, but I will not be the person who will do it.
That's what it's.
That's usually what it's.
Yeah, alright, that's cool. Yeah, I don't like doing it. I'll just log in from wherever I am and just say whoever else wants to do it, go.
And their regular meetings are at five.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's a, it's a.
Yeah, yeah. So unless the board of them disagrees, I'll take it.
No, this is good. At, at least we have a presence. Alright, um, next one, Charlton.
Alright, uh, the Charlton, uh, Charlton Permanent Firefighters Association Local four oh two three is requesting a toll road, um, for, to support the, and, uh, the Mass Killer District Association, or, and a request for permission to host a boot drive in the intersection of Main Street and Sonic Home Road on September thirtieth, twenty twenty three, from eight AM to one PM. All donors received a two and a half wrap, inch round sticker that has "I help firefighters, help Jerry's Queens." Uh, Chief Dowd, um, approved contingent upon the following safety precautions. Thanks, Police Chief Dowd. All volunteers must wear bright red vests, orange tra- traffic cones must be set on on Main Street, and signs with warning voluntary toll road ahead must be erected on Sonic Home Road and Main Street.
Uh, I make a motion to approve of Chief Dowd's, um, amendments or conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright, all business.
Were there, were there any, just any discussions from the fire department?
Alright, let, alright, let's talk fire substation for real now.
No. Well, alright, all business.
Please have a follow-up, please. Alright, uh, so an update to the act authorizing the appointment of special police officers in the town of Charlton. We received notification from, uh, Senator Bettin's senior legislative aide, um, that the Senate council had reviewed this, the legislation, and before moving the bill forward to the President of the Senate, they asked for the selectmen's vote, um, on some minor language changes, uh, that had been previously made by the Committee on Public Service. Uh, they're pretty minor, so.
And they all approved of the, by the legal counsel?
Correct, yeah, they just, the board of selectmen has to approve of the amended, amended changes before they go to the.
So.
All in favor?
Alright.
Police review, nothing here, right?
Right, nothing here.
Got our administrator.
Alright, MVP two point O grant, so we did get a ninety five thousand dollar grant under the MVP two point O program. Essentially, this is a technical assistance grant to, uh, update our climate resiliency plan that was done during the MVP two point one. Uh, one, this will essentially help us engage a consultant to, uh, update the plan accordingly. Uh, one good part is that portion of this, of the grant guarantees a project that is identified will actually be done under that ninety five thousand dollars, so, um, should be a good program. It'll take me a couple of months to complete, but hopefully update everybody that's going along. Uh, lighted properties, so one initiative that, uh, we've been working to gain some traction on is kind of some of these blighted properties that we find around town. Uh, we've been trying to kind of coordinate some effort internally as far as, uh, a, a technical approach of going after it, uh, altogether. I reached out to the Attorney General's Neighborhood Renewal Division last week and asked about, uh, essentially, the program that they have that target, that the Attorney General's Office will actually take on some of these properties and advocate, and essentially take on all of the legal work to, to go after them. They just kind of wanna know what the town's top priorities are. So we actually have an intro meeting in a couple of weeks that will sit down, kind of identify our first round of, of candidates to go after, and then hopefully get the ball rolling on cleaning up some of our, our kind of properties that have become nuisance.
See, I love when, when like you're proactive like this stuff. That's awesome. Yeah, well, that is good.
And, um, also just wanna recognize everybody, great home day, old home day this year. Um, and everybody, you know, every, there was a lot of volunteer time and effort, and it would be possible without them, you know, between our own staff that may show up and volunteer their own time and, and members of the community, so, and kudos to everybody. Um, and then finally, so Mass DOT and Route twenty, so everybody's, you know, aware of the horrific accident that we had last Thursday in the Western Route. I know that everybody's kind of, you know, been clamoring to essentially reach out to Mass DOT and, and get kind of their, um, you know, their eyes on it. Uh, I did have a conversation with District Two Director Barry Laurie today, and to, to talk about this. And he said, you know, this is actually something that they've been looking at for a couple, couple of months, but of course, because of the, the tragedy, had a spark to say, well, what are you guys doing though? So, um, he indicated that, you know, they've been looking at this, and they actually have some conceptual plans of some significant safety improvements that they're looking at implementing this upcoming spring. From our conversation, they do seem to be very significant upgrades. Uh, but until we actually see what they are on plan, um, it's kind of hard to, to judge either way if they're the most best beneficial for us or if we're gonna have concerns. So he said, within the next few weeks, we'll have a meeting to go over what the conceptual plans are, get our, get some of our internal feedback on that. And then once they have some time to process that, then they'll do a public hearing, um, to essentially get any public concerns about what they're looking to do. But they're aggressively going after this and potentially go, you know, have indicated that their target is for next spring to actually. So can we promote the public hearing on our website and in our meeting so that people know that there's gonna be hearing, they can go to Mass Dot? We will be very proactive and try to get this information. So maybe we, we, we hold off getting all the fire and personnel, all the effigies, you know, all the state elected officials to put pressure on Mass Dot until we see if they're already gonna do it.
Right, so good job reaching out to us.
So that's, that's, um, shoveling the ground in the spring?
That is what they're talking about, shovel in the ground.
I've never seen them act that.
Yeah.
Right?
I think enough people died.
Oh, maybe, or maybe, or they did when they, when they put that guardrail on.
But you, but that took how many guts to get that?
That was a governor.
Turned back when they hustled up when that woman that showed.